So, welcome everyone, welcome to the April 13th Plumbton Board of Selectment meeting. Usual brown rules, we won't go into detail because I think everyone here's heard them, but we'll practice patient urgency. We do have a parking lot for items that may come up that need attention, but possibly not tonight. We do try to be time-sensitive in our comments. We know this is serious work, but we do try to bring along some joy and laughter as best we can. We try to maintain civil, low volume of our discussion. And so, just a few minutes of, a few moments of silence to start the meeting for whatever purpose we'd like, whether to prepare for the meeting, or to be thankful for the opportunity we have, or maybe just the moment to enjoy some silence. So again, welcome everyone, and here we are again. So we have the agenda that has been published. Are there any additional items up for consideration along the way? Okay, so I thought what it might do is, we have a bunch of scheduling issues, and I'm not sure we'll decide them all at the beginning of the meeting, but I just wanted to bring them up so we could be thinking about enjoying the meeting. First of all, unbeknownst to some of us, or forgotten by some of us, is that next Monday is a state legal holiday, so I think we probably can't have a Board of Selectment meeting next Monday night. Because we're in the final warrant article preparation, we probably have to have a meeting next week, so we'll have to choose a different night. So that's one issue. And then, the other issue is just figuring out the schedule in terms of the warrant articles. We know we have a meeting next week. I spoke to Susan Ossoff of the Finance Committee a little earlier today, and she felt that April 27th would be the day that Finance Committee would like to have the warrant articles done and ready to go and voted upon. So that's essentially two weeks from today. So that's one thing that we have to keep in mind. And then, in previous years, we've had an all-hands meeting to go over the warrant, and with the accountant, Tom Clerk, town moderator, town council, and so I guess the question there, whether we would try to do that two weeks from tonight as well, on April 27th, or save that after the warrant had already gone to print, but having the discussion, the preparation for town meeting on May 4th. So, those are the issues before us on scheduling. I don't know if anyone has any comments, or if you want to see how this meeting goes and decide that stuff at the end. Decide that stuff at the end? I got a little nod over there.
Yeah, and, you know, 'cause I don't know, you know, once we see, is Finance Committee coming in?
Yeah, and, yes, thank you, I meant to mention that. They will be in. I don't know how quickly we'll get through our stuff. If we get through all of our stuff quickly, we'd have time for other discussion, or we take a brief recess. So in any event, those are the issues we have before us, and we'll decide at the end of the night. So, first agenda item is pays use of town property application. You've had that mentioned. So I think we discussed this a little last week. Simply have to vote to sign this. This is for use of the property, of town property for a movie on June 20th, or 21st, if there was rain, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Any questions, concerns?
Well, there was an email, they said, "Sort it out," or...
I had asked about if they needed a permit or a license to show the movies. They said they've done it five other times without getting a permit, so I...
That's the chairman that goes to jail anyways, I'm sorry.
That's fine, it would be rest, and that would be fine. All right, I make a motion to approve the application for use of town property. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, I think I'm signing here. And today is the 13th. All right, that's that. So we got a letter this week, or maybe it was, yeah, I guess it was a letter from the Girl Scouts, hoping to again do the community garden as they did last year. And I guess Kristin has sent them an application for use of town property, so I guess we'll wait for that to come back. Would be thrilled for them to do that again, thought that was a great project and worked out well.
They didn't plant the arugula last year that they were supposed to, just so make sure that's in the permit.
All right, so we have in the minutes that Mr. Henry needs arugula in his life. All right. So, let me just go down, we'll skip a couple items here. The combined house sales smoke detector, assessors inspections. I wrote to Ilana, and unusually for her, I haven't heard back from her. We voted last week to just seek her opinion on that, so I'll jog her memory in the next few days if she forgets.
I do have just a little bit on that, is that several people have talked to me, and they're just really concerned the assessing agent doesn't actually identify him or herself as being the assessor, they just sort of follow along behind the police, I mean, the fire. So, the public is not real happy with the whole idea.
Well, has it happened already?
Yes, yeah.
And that was, that's where the feedback came from, and that's why I actually brought it up again, just because the fire people are hearing some considerable displeasure. So we'll see what legal input comes. Solar ongoing projects, or anything else?
A couple, and I was just looking at it tonight, and I failed to copy you, Mark and I will certainly do that. I've got, well, I've got a PPA and a pilot from Blue Wave with Town Council, and a pilot for Borrego. So we're in the final...
So, once those done, once those things are done, our negotiating is done?
Yeah, what, Blue Wave has to go to town meeting. The Borrego one, we can, it's already been there, we can just sign it. But Blue Wave is going to town meeting, and it's, it is an article, right?
There's one on the warrant for Blue Wave.
Yeah.
Borrego was last year's...
Borrego's off done.
And there's just one problem with the Borrego contract?
Yeah.
Not a big deal?
Okay. So I guess, well, let me just go back to scheduling again before I forget. Jason Fraser, school committee member, wrote a letter to Senator Kennedy, and he offered to come in and speak with us, so I was going to invite him in next week, if that were all right with you guys, to have further discussion on the things that he's doing, looking at the assessment for various towns. Is that okay with everyone?
That would be fun, we ought to see if we can get Senator to come over.
You know, I could see about inviting him. Senator and Jason, I'll see if anything could come from that. And somewhat similar, since we're on scheduling, we have this OBRA situation with town treasurer, the discussion there, OBRA, is it said? Do we want to invite her in for a discussion, or do we just have more work to do before we're ready to discuss?
She has some more work to do, and it sounds like it's not imperative to deal with it immediately, so we can put it at least until after town meeting.
Okay, great, all right.
There's a lot of, I don't know if you've looked at all my flurry of emails, but there's a lot that we've got, there's probably a consultant or somebody that would come in and say, "It's better for this, or better for that," or...
I asked her whether or not we could apply that to new employees, but not old, and she said it had to be on nothing, and that's what it makes sense to me.
Well, it's weird, I mean, it was put in place for people that have nothing. But for people that have nothing, I'm not sure, but what, Social Security's a better deal.
Better deal for them.
A better deal. You know, I think that if we switch to the other, I think the town should make a voluntary contribution, so that they at least have equal benefits, but...
Well, I guess the next thing is annual town meeting preparations, including preparing warrant articles. So we might as well go to that, we will have Finn come in to talk about the budget. So Dale sent us this afternoon the latest iteration of the list of articles. Do you have any comments, Dale, on...
No, not at this point. I didn't, the copy I've said to does not include the one that you forwarded me from Town Council, the language on that, that particular article, which is a placeholder on this warrant. No, I also forwarded it to Susan Ossoff, and just said, "You know, this is where it is, you know, however, whatever, if you have any other input on it, let me know." And I just did that today, so I don't know what will come with that. But at some point, you know, the board will meet and determine what the order of the articles is going to be, and what stays and what goes.
So I chatted with you earlier today about the South Shore Community Council article.
Yeah, and I put in some phone calls, and I attempted to track that down. Calling them is similar to calling the state, you know, after I went through their nine-number redial, and I didn't really have anything that worked for me, I called the town of Dennis, because they list the town of Dennis as a supporter, and Dennis does it, and I haven't heard the definitive yet back, the town manager hasn't called me town administrator, but from the executive assistant, that they do it as part of their budget line. They have a community action, I mean, a community services budget line, which, and a committee that oversees that budget line, and everyone requests, people make request groups, make requests every year for support from the town, and then the committee determines who gets how much every, every year.
The, I took the brochure home, and had my wife look through it, right, and then she was, I guess, amazed what was in there. And then at the next Council on Aging meeting, they discussed it. I think we may, maybe try to get Chris Morano to come in and talk to us, maybe next Monday night if she can, because there's a lot of stuff in there that they, Council on Aging was unaware it was happening, and now they have reached out to this outfit and asked them to come in and get a better understanding of...
So we want Chris to come in to, for...
Just, you know, the heaviest user is the Council on Aging.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure that they've been really satisfied.
Satisfied with?
With the services, and they're not really comfortable with what was stated in the brochure, so...
Okay.
I mean, they said that they...
They provided this, and provided this.
...have given out so many funds, and put them, and CRO doesn't believe that.
Yeah, the fuel assistance thing, they think is legitimate, no question about it, but I'd rather have them, they had quite a little discussion on it, so they...
All right, and so there's one issue, and the other half of it is, there is this legal question. We had voted a couple meetings ago to make a gift of $2,000, and there is this concern as to whether that town can make a gift to a nonprofit, and...
Right, according to the accountant, no, not, not straight up, right.
Okay. I had discussed with Dale today the consideration, quick question to Town Council, making sure it would be a quick question, and I think maybe that makes sense if there's some simple vehicle. I understand now we'll have to have Kristin in and see what she has to say, but maybe I'd like to make a motion that Dale have a quick consult with Town Council on what vehicle would be available to make this gift if we decide to do it. So is there a second on that?
Check.
All those in favor?
Aye. Would you want, would you want me to wait until after you hear from the Council on Aging?
That was actually going to be my, my discussion, is...
My only concern there is we're going to run out of time, since, I mean, essentially two weeks from tonight, we have to decide where we're at on that article, I have it written.
Okay.
Maybe they have to go.
I would think you, but it's typically these, I don't think they've ever passed town meeting, you know, we've been for things like this before, and usually they don't, they don't pass, but, no, no, have we told Finn come?
Yes, and Susan had concerns about just that, what the vehicle would be for the town to make a gift to a nonprofit. The thing that surprised me a little is when South, when South Shore was in, they seemed to have the language down very well. I don't have it in front of me, but it entailed, I think maybe the word "gift" rather than "donations." I don't know if there's an easy way for that, I mean, maybe this is something that's going to need more research for you.
Are you a contractor?
All right, so I guess within the warrant articles, and also an agenda item is PEG access preparations, and I've been sharing with you all the interchan, or exchanges with Town Council, and as best I can see, the article that most closely fulfills our needs at this point would be an enterprise fund article. And so, at the moment, that looks like the one that we would use. This has been an amazingly complex process, and a lot of different opinions about what way to do this. Essentially, this is an accounting article to figure out how to get the money from Comcast to us, to the nonprofit agency that would be running the studio. Part of the problem that I've discovered along the way is this is brand-new legislation from last fall, that many considered, ill-considered, and that even the expert attorneys don't know how to deal with this yet, are waiting for further direction from the DOR, are waiting for further direction from the Attorney General. We happen to be one of the towns that are right there in the process of this. Town Council assured me today that what may well be needed is to simply start in this way, and then as it becomes clearer what DOR and the Attorney General want, in addition, that we might have to change it along the way. In addition, as time passes, there is this question of whether maybe in the future, internet access would be taxed, or license fee leveled, or levied, and if that were the case, it would have to change in the future. So, in the ideal world, this would be a lot simpler and a lot clearer, but Town Council was quite content that the enterprise fund was the best way to do this, and that's what I know so far. I know others have done it differently, and Karen Floyd, who's here tonight, has done a lot of research on how other towns do it. I think they had the benefit of doing this before this new legislation, that's really challenged everyone.
Well, you have something similar to an enterprise fund, don't you? You present a budget and...
Well, I found out what, basically what we had done, and what other towns around us had done, was they had used Section 53A, which is grants and gifts expenditures, or finances from municipalities, and what that is, I can, it's receiving of funds from any, from federal government, charitable foundations, private corporations, et cetera. And in the case of, they basically created this grant fund, and in the license, they say it's a grant fund, that the money's going to this grant fund, and then from there, the selectmen of issuing authority has authorized payment to go directly from Comcast. In our case, it's a municipality, so it still comes to the town and goes into their account, but in other towns, it goes directly to the 501(c)(3), without being, as part of that 53A, it says, "There's no further appropriation required." So it's, it's up to the 501(c)(3) to issue, to put together a financial statement at the end of the year, and explain what the funds were used for, and what came in, et cetera.
Don't you present a budget?
We present a budget as a municipality, but it's not something that's voted on, because it's not funds that come out of the general fund, so it's more of a informational budget.
And my understanding from Town's Council is she feels very strongly that some kind of appropriation at town meeting is needed, particularly within the legislation. The whole thing's kind of, silly's not the right word, it's an exercise, it's an odd exercise in that those, if by chance Town Meeting didn't appropriate those funds in any year, it couldn't be used for anything else, except PEG access anyway, so it almost becomes a moot point.
But I think that's why a lot of the issuing authorities have voted to move the control of the funds to the 501(c)(3), and have the funds direct deposited from Comcast or Verizon, whoever...
Which is the exact thing, apparently, that the legislation that was approved last fall was trying to stop, that there was concern that, that these funds could be used in a different way than they should, and therein lies this move toward the yearly appropriation. The whole thing is so amazingly complex, and turns into really just an accounting issue. I mean, it's all the same money, it's all going to the same place, it's just the new way, I have a feeling six months from now, a year from now, DOR and/or Attorney General are going to have very specific language. One of the problems is, now that this issue has been raised, now that DOR is aware of it, I mean, we're very much in the spotlight to get this exactly right.
And so is this specific to this cable relationship, or is this, because I mean, it seems odd to me that it isn't the same type of thing as you have for other revolving accounts, where at town meeting, you have to authorize it through town meeting, but once you do that, whether it be for selling signage, you know, to raise money on the ball field, or for certain fees that are collected that go in, and this is, this is no specific language to cause problems with this issue, even though it's not really any different?
This legislation was specific to cable and PEG.
Unfortunately, we couldn't use that specific legislation for our wording, because we did not have any funds to begin with. So rather than use the actual legislation wording in Chapter 53f and 3/4, so we have to use Chapter 53f and 1/2, which has to do with enterprise accounts, and that's why I was saying, why can't we just use 53A, which is just a restricted grant account? And that's all I'm saying.
And all I can say is Town Council was very clear that we should use half or 3/4. It became much easier once it was clear that 3/4 was for funds already collected, which we don't have, and so this becomes it. I mean, the amount of work and time, and even legal fees that's gone into this, our conversations back and forth, all the conversations here, I mean, it's just, it's, forgive me, it's nuts, but I, for me right now, the key is to just have a vehicle that passes muster, and I think this is the vehicle that passes muster.
Right, I think we need to get something in place, otherwise we will lose out.
Right, and that's, and essentially we have...
And if we can change it down the road to, and the DOR decides there's a better way, and they make F53G, then...
You know what's complicated? You know, it's very, very simple why it's complicated. Because there's, the subscribers are being taxed, and that's, it's very, how do you fit that into the typical, typical scheme of things?
You know, John, and I know that's your concern, and kind of on a deep philosophical level, I've mentioned many times, I agree. The interesting piece is to give the people of town, I mean, certainly it's the way the vast majority of towns do it, so we're not doing anything unusual, but the more I think about it, if we want to give people the most opportunity to decide whether they want to pay for this stuff or not, is to do it through the cable TV license. If people are just dead-set against it, if they don't want to spend four to six dollars more a month, the way they can stop that is by simply going to some other means than cable TV. If we tax everyone, they're taxed, and they're stuck with it.
Yeah, but they get to vote on it.
They do, but, you know, this way...
It's democracy.
Well, this is even, I think this way is even better democracy, because everyone gets to decide for themselves.
Yeah, but you don't have, you don't have an option.
Sure you do.
Of course you do.
I've had cable TV in two years.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
I've had cable TV in two years.
No, but I mean, you can do that.
And therefore, those people, people like John that went off, I mean, if philosophically it kills you to do the extra few bucks a month, then you go off cable television, you're free of, you're free of this obligation.
I still think it, the taxpayers, if they want it, they should pay for it.
Well, you know, if they vote down this, this article, then, you know, I think we, we'd have to find some other vehicle to proceed, I don't think we'd be able to. We would go black, but that's an option for people. Not recommended by any means. I mean, we have the opportunity to join a tri-town studio with all the expertise, with the equipment, with the combined resources, for really minimal expense.
To you, minimal to you.
No, I, I fully recognize our responsibility, our obligation, especially in this town, to be as frugal as possible. And it's only been two years working on this project, and boy, it'll be good when it's done.
Now, John, do you have a way to watch it?
Yeah, I have a digital antenna to watch live television, which gets both Boston and Providence stations crystal clear, better than Comcast has ever delivered them.
No, but to get Channel 13?
I don't.
You don't?
No, I don't pay for it, I don't get it.
He sits here and watches you.
So, no, I mean, that's, that's part of it, I don't have that.
And take a bottle of wine, go over to somebody else's house and...
Yeah, exactly. So, no, I don't, I don't get it, but I also don't pay for it, so...
Okay. So, anything else as we endlessly go over that project? So we had two other placeholders. Are we getting closer to any language on the other placeholders as the clock ticks away to two weeks from now?
The one that's difficult at this point, but we should have something, is the bylaw requiring the taping, recording of meetings in the town, and that they get put on the internet, that's one of the articles, and it's just, it's hard how to structure that, whether you structure it with a, you know, a blanket thing, or whether you phase it in, you know, because there's some, there's some money required with that.
So, do we, is, since we're under two weeks, and we're going to have to be voting on this, are we expecting that language along the way?
I'm just trying to find somebody who's done it ahead of us, and it's policy in places, but it's not, it's not in the terms of the bylaw.
Is there a funding source for this?
Well, initially, we wouldn't, if we phased it in, you wouldn't. I mean, initially, you could, you know, you could limit it to your, your major monetary committees, and then you could shift in after that, the following year, and pick up the non-major monetary committees, committees that are in charge of spending a lot of money.
You're seeing this as separate from assuming that we join the tri-town studio? This is something totally different than that?
Well, it's just, it would be an aside from it, yeah, it would be a side. It's, it's basically providing recordings of meetings on the internet, and requiring that all meetings are taped and put on the internet in a certain period of time.
And if we don't join the studio, and we don't appropriate the funds, how is this going to happen?
to happen?
Well, I mean, again, that would change things. I mean, as a separate article, you would probably, if the joining the studio was voted down at the Town Meeting, you would probably pass over this article because there's no funding source for it at this point.
Well, and there would not be...if our enterprise fund article is approved, that still wouldn't be a funding source for this.
Right.
Our negotiated agreement with the tri-town studios is...
Well, again, I mean, let me...
How many meetings do you get in the contract?
Hundred.
Hundred meetings?
A hundred without...
A hundred meetings and events.
What's that?
It's 100, coverage of 100 meetings and events in town.
Yes, coverage and those put on TV. And at this point, no additional charge to the town for filming and the like. What hasn't been discussed, as far as I'm aware, at the tri-town studios, if there were more than 100, how they could be contracted for. I mean, all that needs to still get worked through.
It would seem like it should be some kind of timing thing, too. I mean, sometimes our meetings are an hour, sometimes they're three hours, so if there are a lot more hours, then maybe we could have more meetings.
At this point, no distinction is made for the meetings. Some of the board's selectman meetings in other towns go until 10:00 or 11:00 at night. John would be asleep, but I'd be wide awake.
Yeah, right.
All right, so we're seeing how it goes.
Hopefully I'll have some language on that, you know, coming up and we'll see where it goes from there. Again, your final...that's your final call on whether you can...
And something with the land?
Yeah. The sale of land, I basically have, you know, the language for it, but I did inquire on Town Council, she came back and gave us, you know, the information, the criteria. We have to determine, you know, how the land was acquired and so on and so forth, whether it was tax title, whether there was a specific purpose, and so on and so forth. Fundamentally, it requires an affirmative Town Meeting vote and then a valuation of the property, I mean, a appraisal.
Is that an advance, right?
Pardon me?
We're doing that now?
Yeah, well, in the process of doing that now, yeah. I mean, we don't have...
That's an advance. We need that for Town Meeting, the appraisal.
Well, you have to, yes, you'd have to have a number on it, so that's...and that's going to be...
So the only thing that I'd ask is since two weeks from tonight, I think that's going to be it. The warrant is the warrant. The sooner you can get that information, either article language to us so we can be ruminating, the better, please.
I will forward that.
Are there any special warrants?
Yeah, I had a conversation with the accountant and I guess she had been in contact with the FinCom and they had taken four articles that were on the annual and moved them to the special Town Meeting warrant because they're transfers of money from other places. So, and that's the way they decided to do it. And then there's a fifth added, which transfers money, available money in two accounts into the building and grounds account. And that was my request because when you're dealing with a bunch of old buildings, you tend to have needs for money. We had to have the septic system unplugged and that, you know, that came up and a few other things.
What is this $6,000 number?
Where do you see it?
For the retiring officer.
Is the board looking part of last year?
Yeah. That supplements the...
I know, but we had put in for 10.
And what's going to be required this year is $16,092. So that's the FinCom.
But we were building it for the next guy, remember?
The FinCom decided it was one and done.
FinCom put upon themselves to decide that. Okay. Are they going to tell us these things as we go along or we're just going to find out like this?
Well, they'll be in soon and I don't think they're meeting next week. So essentially, we have tonight to speak with them and two weeks from today. So time to...time to hash it out.
This is how it's been for a couple of persons of those.
It was our article and we had it for $10,000. So, I mean, I think it should stand at that and then the FinCom can recommend a change. But it's one of those things, two years from now, we've got another person retiring. So, I mean, you can't look at this as a, just trying to cover one person. It's like the OPEC. You've got to start building up. As these policemen age, you need a fund there.
So your suggestion would be $10,000 a year?
Yeah, that's what we started doing.
I think the question you need to answer, because there's $20,000 going into the OPEB, the post-employee benefits trust fund that was created last year, and I believe you could use those funds for that same purpose?
No.
No.
No, that's actual...that's hell.
Separation versus post-employee.
Okay. So we'll have more chance on articles in a few minutes when FinCom comes in. Anything else before they come in on Town Meeting? One other thing, as we decide the schedule and whether we have our all-hands-on-board meeting on April 4th or 11th, is whether we want to invite Town Council in, as we did last year. And then there's a whole separate question on whether she'd be available or not, but I guess we'll discuss that in a few minutes. So I think maybe we're up to Town Coordinator report, if that's all right?
Sure. Couple of things. We're beginning to get numbers in for FY '16. This is from my, our insurance carrier and they represent property and casualty insurance and professional liability insurance. Professional liability did go up, but it's a much smaller number and the property and casualty actually went down. So overall, over last year, we're a 0.7% lower than we were last year. And it's about a $3,800 savings, but there are also some other, if we...which we usually do, pay before July 1st, we get 4% discount premium on that. And we also have another...my reward, a part of the Meyer Rewards program will produce another something over $3,000. So actually, and I just got this today, the...I haven't notified the FinCom yet, but there's probably some space in that article. We can lower that, the number, the budgeted number that I put out for insurance.
Maybe we're going to have to fund the thing that they cut us on.
You can talk to them later about that.
So you'll bring that up when you...
Yeah, and we...Mayflower Municipal Health Group insurance rates are in and they are up slightly over normal plans, 2% and 4%, depending on whether it's Blue Cross or Harvard Pilgrim. And they're down, Blue Cross numbers for medics, three, and managed blue for seniors is down...one is down 7.3%, the other is down 13%. So there's...it's up slightly. That's a treasurer's article, they'll be putting...adjusting that, I'm sure. And we got the results of the PERC test for the campus here, completely done. In fact, you'll be signing the invoice for it tonight and you'll be happy to know we passed with flying colors, everything is fine. System, which was installed, I think in 1999, is working fine, no problems with it, so that's complete. And we will move on to doing the same thing on the Center Street parcel now that we can find it because the snow has gone. And I think...I think that's it for me on this end, yeah.
So I had one question on the treasurer's office moving over to the old selectmen room.
Oh, yeah, that was...
Concerns on the timeline and getting that room up and going again, and then concerns if we have too many meetings overlapping at night.
Schedule for meetings is going to have to vary because this room may have to be used if there, you know, because there are a couple of committees that do meet in that room. I spoke with Rebuildex today and they're expecting, they're testing those panels, the old roof tiles for asbestos. They've spoken to the adjuster, the insurance adjuster. The insurance adjuster says as soon as the test comes back, if it's asbestos-free, they're going to move right in and start reworking, you know, reworking that room to eliminate the problems. But he did say, I think when we met with him that week, he said it could be as long as three weeks, they'll be in that room, so we...
Three weeks working in the room.
Three weeks working in there before we can move them back in.
So the ticker hasn't even started yet on those three weeks?
Yeah, I think it did. I think it started last week only because it won't take them long once they move in to fixes, but you don't know, assuming if there's, you know, again, it's an old building. If there's any asbestos, then it all has to be professionally removed and that's a fairly extensive program. But these people do work fast, it doesn't take them too long to, you know, a couple or three days and they'll have that all done and then the crews could come back in and fix it the way it's supposed to be fixed.
And this is all covered by insurance?
So far, I mean, yeah, the insurance company is still, yeah, the insurance company's still in the driver's seat and they did tell them, you know, like you said, they just told them, you're waiting for the, wait for the asbestos test to come back and then you can move forward from there.
It's also a test for lid, if I understand. They also test for lid.
Yeah, there's probably more than just the asbestos, but that would be the, that would be the big thing.
Can I ask you to coordinate with Tom Clark then to just make sure we're not ending up with three different meetings and not enough rooms in Town House?
I mean, we have, I know that the planning board meets in that room sometimes for hearings and some other times. I know the ConCon meets in that room, but they, I mean, such as it is, they do have their own space, they could meet in there unless they had a, you know, unless they had a big event. And probably the biggest inconvenience is the council on aging because they use that room as well, but they're still set up in there so they can do it other than having their regular meetings. They probably have to move in here, but those are daytime meetings, so there's really not a conflict there. So, but I will definitely check with Tom.
I think the big concern, well, Tuesday nights, ConCon is in, I think Ag is in next week, we might be in, just want to make sure we have enough space for everybody.
Partition the room, huh?
The library's open on Tuesdays.
Pardon?
The library's open on Tuesdays.
Okay.
We have meetings there.
Get the meeting room on the left in the way.
Okay. What next? Oh, I guess, Public Safety Buildings Planning, anything?
Again, we're going to, we're going to do the evaluation on the Center Street property and that'll be ongoing and then after that, after that, the whole thing, we'll hinge on where the Town Meeting vote is on the project consultant to go forward. If that happens, then we can actually, you know, submit, get some plans and get ready and move ahead with the bonding and so on and so forth. Or actually preliminarily move on with the bonding. The bonding would take a Town Meeting vote, but that would be in the fall if we did it.
So the weekly plea, or plea about town government vacancies, we have elected offices that are open, write-in candidates would be a way to go. July 1st, we'll have a bunch of appointed committee openings, wonderful chance for people to get involved, wonderful chance to go beyond frustration and words and actually get into action. And I think any of the selectmen would be more than glad to speak to citizens about what's available and we strongly encourage you to get involved. You don't want to miss out on all the fun we're having up here. I guess we can go to correspondence.
This is a letter from the Norfolk County Agricultural High School to let us know that the tuition rates remain the same as they were this past year. A letter of commendation from the police chief, which I will read. Honorable Board, it's my privilege to write this letter of commendation for Officer Brent Peterson. On April 6, 2015, Officer Peterson responded to a medical call for an adult male who had overdosed on heroin, was not responsive, and a family member was doing cardiopulmonary resuscitation. Having recently been trained in the use of an opiate antidote, Officer Peterson quickly assessed the situation and immediately administered Narcan to reverse the effects of his overdose. He then administered six more cycles of CPR. This action revived the patient and helped restore normal breathing and heart rhythm. Because of his quick and professional efforts, the patient is alive and well. Although it is not uncommon for police officers to save a life during a day's work, I believe that it does not need to go unnoticed. For this reason, I plan to award Officer Peterson a lifesaver day, a day off with pay, for his actions. Please join me in thanking Officer Peterson for his quick action in this instance and to recognize his professionalism and unmatched service excellence. I could not be more proud. Patrick Dell, Chief of Police. We agree in appreciating his efforts and the results. This is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, letting us know that we can register today for the MassBuys Expo, which is a free expo on joining, learning about 375 vendors that supply things to the government through statewide contracts. This is a letter from Columbia Gas asking to dig a hole in the corner of Crescent and Main Street, two feet by two feet by three feet deep, to install a two-wire test station. It does not say that it was copied to the Highway Department, I assume it should be?
Yeah, usually we say fine as long as the highway agrees.
There doesn't seem to be anything to sign. Do we need to make a motion on that, then?
Are they requesting or they are requesting permission?
Yes, that's a request permission, yes.
Well, I'll make a motion for permission as described.
Subject to...
Highway?
Subject to highway, highway subject.
Second?
All those in favor? It's like a group motion.
Okay, these are letters about electricity aggregation for residents and businesses in the town. You mentioned something about that being a possibility with, is it Blue Wave?
Yes, I mean, that's, that whole installation is a community, so...
Copy of the Beacon, copy of the Halifax Express, Girl Scout letter that we already discussed, and the fowl's application we already discussed today.
We have one email from, or I'm sorry, is that complete?
That's complete, yes.
We had one email from the Massachusetts Municipal Association reminding us that April 15th, this Wednesday, is the second anniversary of Marathon bombing and Mayor Walsh of Boston was asking for a moment of silence at 2:49 PM on Wednesday in commemoration of all of So I guess we have executive session minutes from last week. Maybe we need to wait for our next executive session to go over some of those because they're kind of lengthy and we may have some edits we want to do, yeah? Is that all right? And then we have the regular, or the open meeting minutes of April 6th and I have a few edits.
I don't mean to interrupt, can I just ask a question on the, excuse me, the correspondence from last week? I wasn't at the last week's meeting, I was on YouTube and was there a letter sent about herbicide spraying happening?
Yes.
There wasn't much discussion on it, so I just didn't know how the board feels on the contamination of the soil with the herbicide spraying and who's, is it the electoral company that's doing it or where is it being done? I guess I have a couple of questions. Where is it being done? When's it going to be done and how does the board feel about it?
Is that actually under the purview of Board of Health? And we were copied.
We are notified of any of the sprains and any of that, so. Off the top of my head, I don't remember. It was, I will call that I read the letter, but if you want, it can be your name. but if you want to give me your name and number, I'd be happy to give you a call tomorrow, and, you know, fill your way in, or we'll make you.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm just asking, because, you know, we are, the town is on well water I'm also a, I'm also a beekeeper, and I'd like to just know when they're spraying, if it's gonna happen early in the morning, or is somebody gonna be out there doing it when, when there's pollination going on? Because I'm not the only one in the town that does do that for a hobby, and I know the town of Falmouth, their selectmen voted, or they're, they're having an issue with the same type of thing happening, and they're not allowing it to happen in that town, so I just didn't know.
These are herbicides, not insecticides, so.
It's weed killers, right? Herbicides? Yeah, well, pollinators do pollinate on weeds that have flowers, and whatever the chemicals it is going into the soil, it's going in the soil, so I just wanna know.
I'm sure you can find, in me telling the letter, right, most of the chemicals that are used today are not persistent, they, they have a pretty short life, and what you talk about is the power lines.
Yep, that's, the town of Falmouth is talking about the power lines also.
That's the normal.
And their concerns are with the soil and groundwater, so I'm just.
Well, we should, we should find out what it is they're using, and.
Yeah, we can, we have it in the board.
And I believe there was a map that said where that was happening to.
So you have that, and you can get that information to the gentleman? And, and maybe we can have it as an agenda item if you want, next week as well.
I was just curious, that's all. I was just watching on YouTube, and I just, you know, between my kids and stuff, I'm just like, oh, did they say that's doing some spraying? You know, I'm just.
I, I, I don't know what my opinion is, I, I mean, I hate the fact that we have to use that stuff, and I think it's a matter of weighing the benefits against the risks.
They're just gonna, like, from what I understand, in Falmouth, I think they're just gonna mow it, they're just mow it, you know?
Well, why don't we get some information to you, and potentially we can put it on the agenda for further discussion next week, if you'd like, if you'd like to, to.
Just that.
I'm just curious, because some people just aren't informed, you know what I mean? There'll be, there'll be some person out there spraying in the middle of the day, and, you know, just not, just not honeybees, just regular foragers are gonna be out there, and, you know, then they're, that's it, they're gonna be gone. So, and then I know there's a lot of folk, you know, there are guys who have their hives down, you know, on the front, in the farms, to pollinate the, pollinate the crops and stuff for the upcoming season.
That was a, a letter, a handwritten, or a hard copy letter, would you, could you dig that out and scan it and get it to us? Thank you.
Thanks.
Curious, do you know if it's the town that's taking over the mowing, or if they're insisting that the power company's doing it?
The power company's doing it. I mean, I think for the last four years, the Cape area has, they, they've been strong against not using any chemicals, 'cause of their drinking water, so. Yeah, just, when you get it pulled up, just pull Falmouth Enterprise up, and there's an article in there.
Okay, minutes of April 6th. You have a bunch of stuff?
Not too much.
So I, I have one thing on the first page, why don't, why don't you add one to yours? On the second bullet point under sandwich boards, the last sentence, laminated posters are thought to, are thought to run, are thought to, should be added there, thank you. We didn't know for sure.
Do you want, do you want to? Do you want to?
Just two beekeepers talking.
Pardon?
Just two beekeepers talking.
Okay. I didn't know, on the first bullet point on page two of the minutes, if we wanted to put down which articles Town Council was seeking guidance on, or whether that was just a general statement.
I'm okay with it being a general statement.
Okay, all right, I'll let that be. And then, one, two, three, fourth bullet point down, Mr. Russo speaking as a private citizen stated that he was very opposed to selling town land for development, was what I said. And then the last bullet point, Mr. Russo pulled out the warrant article, maybe if we could say supply the warrant article. Just sounds a little better. And then the last page, the solar ongoing projects, I think we got flipped on the, the rates, I think it was Blue Wave, that was 10.75 cents and no inflation.
That's the first time I come in with one of these with a change.
I'm sorry, no, I take that back. John, did you pick up something?
Yeah, you're correct, it's, it's reversed. Blue, Blue Wave is the 10.75 with no escalator. Completely reversed.
Under the land, it's, I don't know, the second page, I believe. We had a vote under annual town meetings, and there are two more budgets. Was that five acres, uh, five lots? Was that the correct number for the Maple Street?
There's, there's, there's five parcels that make up the town-owned land that are in that, and the, where the perks are, are on two of them, and it's, they're not, they're not lots, really, they're parcels.
Okay, so I changed it to parcels, and did we say that a restriction would be placed on the property, women in it, to, to lots?
I thought, I thought we voted that, yeah.
Yes, okay, I, I didn't see. Oh, right there, two building parcels, yeah. All right, I think that's important. That's important. Let's go to the staff.
All right, I, last bullet, third page, I think it should be a period after office and the Capitol there. So I make a motion, the, these minutes be accepted as amended.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have, I think, we're not of agenda items, so, could you let FinCom know, they may not be ready, but just let them know, we're ready anytime, maybe they can give us an estimate of how long, and we'll decide whether to recess for a couple minutes or not.
Those are mine, I'm sorry.
I guess with that, is this a time to discuss further the scheduling issue then? Or should we wait until we've talked to FinCom? Maybe we should talk to them. So maybe we'll sit here quietly for a moment.
Question for you, the gentleman over here from the Board of Health, is he the head of the Board of Health?
Uh, he is the chair, yes. Art Morin.
Morin?
Morin, M-O-R-I-N. Okay, why don't we do a, unless anyone has anything else, we'll take a five-minute recess? Okay? Okay, we'll be back in five minutes. So, welcome back, everyone, we took a few minutes recess, and the Pumpkin Board of Selectmen are now meeting with the Pumpkin Finance Committee.
Hi, y'all. We are working on the budget tonight, and we are in the middle of doing that, and just paused to come talk to you, so we, we are not presenting any sort of final product.
But we have an idea.
Yes.
You've started.
We've got a concept, we've got, we have an, I don't know, an updated revenue projection that we're using tonight, and we, Dale, like, this afternoon, like, this afternoon, had emailed us the Warren article, so we kind of tried to run through them, so we could talk to you about that tonight, and then we have the budget.
Revenue go up or down?
Revenue, I'm sorry?
The revenue projection.
Well, it actually went up. The revenue number actually went up a little bit. Yeah, well, it only went down because she moved that capital.
Things got moved, so.
The number looks like it went down, but it's because she originally, she had some revenue from the capital account built in, and we told her we didn't want that built in, we wanted that left out, and we'll, because we'll do that, add that at the end. So that took like $150,000 off the revenue, but we earned a little bit of revenue in overlay, release of overlay, and increased new growth. Those numbers still on? Yeah, those, all the numbers are still actually, you know, estimates, because nothing's settled until September.
Well, I think, I think new growth is, is pretty.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it like?
Well, I mean, they're waiting, particularly on the personal property, to have RRC take a look at it, and to validate the, the estimate that they've already made, and that's not happened, happened yet, so.
What happened? I'm not sure, I hope so.
The assessors released some overlay?
Yes.
They released 47,901, we were counting on 20, so it's a $29,000 increase.
Wow.
So that's.
Why were agreed with the 47?
Barbara gave me the number.
Oh, she gave me the number?
Barbara gave me, and she put it in her projection, that's where you got it.
I think, start with the Warren articles, because they are just a little clearer.
Start with the Warren article? We'll start the annual town meeting, we have, so articles. I guess, first question is whether article, Article 11, is that thing, that wasn't withdrawn, the fire emergency SUV? That's, that's still on the line?
I think it was withdrawn.
It was not withdrawn by the fire department, it was, I had asked.
Which is not approved by the fire department.
And, and he said that he would, he wanted to talk with FinCom and the Board of Selectmen, and I saw him tonight and asked him if he had spoken to you, and he said no, and I asked him, well, did he still want it on the warrant? And he said, well, he's leaving it on the warrant. That's his opinion, leave it on the warrant, but.
I, I think we voted for not to be on the warrant. That's my recollection, I.
I thought that's what, that's what we thought.
That is my vague recollection as well, I guess we'll have to.
Seems to be a consensus, so, I mean, we'll just take it off, I mean, it's not a problem.
Can we take it off at this one?
Sure. Yeah, you control the warrant.
If you voted not to put it on, that's what I recall from you as well, it's the only one to.
Are we feeling like we voted not to put it on? Okay, so, take it off?
Okay, we weren't recommending it anyway, but just, so, I guess that might change some of the numbering. So the other, the other ones up through 17, we are, you have the same thing as you guys So, we get to the one, we, we had asked, requested that there be an article on the warrant in order to enable us to pay off the town barn and the school roof, that article's not on the warrant.
I'm not sure that you, I'm not sure that you need an article specifically to pay that off, I mean, the money, you know, the appropriation has been made, and, and if you have the money, you can pay it off early.
No, there's a capital stabilization account, no?
Neither two-thirds, well?
Yeah, that.
That, that should be on there.
Okay.
I mean, we called Barbara, the alternative is if we could pay it off by just putting, putting it in the line and the budget and the hold and funding it, but partly that, in the principal and interest line, it would be, I think, cleaner to do this, if we can do that.
I'll put it on.
And that, that number, I think, is $99,028, and it would be to pay off the balance, the principal and interest for the town barn and the school roof only. Let's verify that number for, so you, you will add that, maybe you could add that in, it's number 11, so we don't have the number or anything else. And the other article that you have added that we don't have is the Substate Community Action Council, but there's no dollars in there in that. So in terms of us bunching the budget, we have.
So the vote was $2,000, but we have that on the agenda next Monday, for, for the discussion.
Okay, we just have a value for them.
There, there's a moderate chance that that'll get passed over.
Okay, we're just trying to reconcile our list and, and this, and then we also, the four articles on the special right now look like all the, the, oh.
The article for the.
The transfer, sorry, the five.
Article five.
On the special.
It's not, it's not a money article.
It's not a money article, yeah, okay.
The police buyback?
No, Article five in the special was to move money into the, from the couple lines into your building maintenance, and we just need the wording on that one changed, because that article was amended to change, make sure the title of that count was changed, from land and building accounts to, um, town building maintenance and grounds account is the title of that account, that's.
Town building.
Town building, maintenance, and grounds account, instead of town building and land account.
You got that, Dale?
Yep.
And that was from the 2013 town meeting, because it was, is that 13? It was.
That was from the special meeting held on May 12th of fiscal year 2013.
Lisa, could you just say that one more time?
Sure. It is the, should be called the town buildings, maintenance, and grounds account.
Okay, thank you.
Funding the, the buyback of the police, sick time, I think we had put in our article for 10 grand, and now it's some other number.
$6,092, which is what the police chief said he needed.
But remember, we're, we're trying to build that fund up, so we have it in advance for, for the next guy, this two years, before we discuss it. It's almost like you're old.
Yeah, we may be able to take a little more money out of reserve to fund one of the 6,000.
What was the number? That's on the special, right?
The special, our whole three.
And I believe it says $6,092 on the article, but if you want to amend that, that should be amended before, you can't.
Yeah, I gave much.
So that needs to be changed.
Now, we, when we originally discussed it, it was for 10,000, it's the selectmen's article.
But I believe what was given to us says 6,000.
And you had, you had changed it to the 6,000, and, and.
It's been this for a while.
We, we didn't, we didn't have any articles on the special, till now.
So did that, that got moved over from the.
Four were, four were moved from the annual to the special.
When, when the, the board discussed, the board's article, it was, when we discussed the fact that, yes, we know, it's only 16 for this one officer, but it's, we're trying to build that fund.
I remember the conversation, and, and, you're, I mean, it's, it's up, it's up to you and to the board as to how much you want to put in.
Whatever you guys decide. We may recommend, I mean, we'll, we'll see where we end up, but you can, it's your article, you don't tell you what goes in your articles.
Correct?
Yes.
So we might.
So you know the four articles that are up there, the one special, you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Am I changing that back? Mr. Chair, am I changing that back to 10?
Yes.
So, so we'll have to, going back to the annual articles, all, the four articles as the, as of, right now in the middle of our budget meeting tonight, we are, our plan so far is to fund the four special town meeting articles out of the reserve fund, the balance of the reserve fund, and then looking at the annual town meeting articles, the, four of them would be funded. out of the capital purposes fund. They would be the payment for the humpers, the asphalt hotbox request by the highway department, the safety building project manager, and the pay off the town barn and school roof article. Those four would be the ones that we find out of capital, everything else would be out of Barbara, which is what Barbara recommends. Okay.
Can I, I just have, I have one question on that. Do you want the article to read that way? Because generally, I mean, I write the articles, available funds, and then if that's the...
Available funds.
If that's, if that's the source, then in the motion, you would say the specific fund, and it would be up to the moderator to remind people that that's a two-thirds vote.
Right. And in Article two of the special, I, I personally object to the language saying from stabilization because we'd like to fund that out of the reserve fund anyway, but...
All right.
That also should say the same, the language should be parallel. Whoever wants to amend it.
You want available funds in there as well, and then you, whatever the motion...
It's right on my article, so I'm just, I'm just saying...
That's what, it's up to you guys. That's what we...
So we're preferring that in Article two of the special, to see if town meeting will vote, and what's the, what's the rest of the language?
Transfer from available funds.
Transfer from available funds.
And Barbara tells us what language to put in. And stabilization is available funds. If somebody wants to make that motion, I mean, we'll make that, that's fine, but it should all be the same, I think. Ready for warrant? I mean, the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, are we good with the warrant? All right, so, the budget, that we're, we haven't changed anything since you last brought it because we were just working on the special. Right now, the total, the total that we've recommended influx is about $9.7 million. There's an additional 90, almost 6, $96,000 in warrant articles.
How much again?
About $96,000. That's not coming out of, out of fund.
Coming from raise and appropriate.
Coming from raise and appropriate.
And then less, so if you take that number we have, which is the number we started with, you're going to add in the $96,000 for the warrant articles. We will then subtract up $74,000, which is the principal and interest line, which we can fund out of the capital purpose fund. That gives us 9,776 to raise and appropriate. Our available is 9,949, which puts us about $173,000 under the levy, which is approximately, really rough guessing, estimating, 2% under the levy limit, which is still about a 5% tax increase.
We think we don't have...
Yeah, those, those percentages are really, really rough. There is some tweaking. I think we wanted to talk to you about a couple of places we see there could be additional need, that we may need to move things around, switch things a little bit.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, we, we had, we had originally taken the funding for Dare out, hoping that perhaps the CASA could fund it. We have since heard that perhaps it needs to be put back into the police budget. It's about $2,200, I believe.
Or 30.
30 to, 30 something, but he could possibly get $1,000 from the Upland Cup, make a donation towards it. We've also been hearing about an additional need in the town clerk's office. There is, as of right now, there's nothing added there. Board of Selectment salaries, we would like to leave it at $600. I think you had kind of said to put it down to low, like nothing. I mean, we kind of feel that just the driving you guys do, that something should be in there, and it's been funded at 600. So we're just looking at some...
Yeah, but the 600 it was, I think I said before...
Yeah, it was mostly going to one select...
Joe got 500.
Right. So it's, it's up to you, I mean, it is, again, it's up to you. You know, we don't, we're not going to recommend what you don't want, but we felt it was fair to leave it at the 600.
Give it to the town clerk.
Couple of tanks of gas.
Yeah, I'd, I'd much rather even a few more hours for the town clerk, so...
I don't think $600 is going to...
So are we going to, we'd spend one $50 each, a buck a week?
Uh, five, yeah, how about...
At that point, we'd probably save money on W2 forms if we just bagged the whole thing. Zero would be a good number for me.
It's up to you guys.
You want a dollar?
That's fine.
You don't have to take it. I just could budget like $3, so there's money, something in the line.
Add $600 to the town clerk.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I just interject one thing here? This is for the, they don't know, I just found out this afternoon. Maya came back with their rates, we're starting to get rates in now, so we know what we're going to spend in an FY16. We dropped like .07% from overall, and they represent about $55,000 out of the blanket insurance line item. So I don't know where workman's comp will come in, and I don't know where our public, public safety insurance will come in, but I think you could probably lower the budget number that I gave you by 4,000, and maybe more, but I'll let you know, I haven't got the rest of them yet. But I think there's an additional 4,000 that you can plug into some holes wherever you might find them.
And do you think that the other ones, you've got enough money, there's not going to be any increases beyond what you estimated for the others, you don't think?
I don't anticipate huge increases. I mean, I was, that's our property and casualty, is, and, and professional liability insurance, those two together represent about $55,000. And, and it should drop, we should be able to save about 4,000 off of the number that I gave you originally in that estimate. And, and we may do better, I mean, I may be able, we may be able to do more when I get the others in, but I, I don't want to say now because...
Yeah, sure.
If you get the numbers in at some point, could you just drop an email to us with a letter?
Oh, yeah, 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 I was going to, I just got this letter from my this afternoon. I'll definitely let you know if I...
Because we still have shuffling tugs a little.
What, how do you feel about workman's comp? Because I don't know when our last audit was.
Again, I don't know where it's going to come in. We may have an increase there, but I did put in a fairly large increase this year for the, for that whole line item. And we don't break that line item out. I mean, it's blanket insurance, and it pretty much covers all the insurance needs for the town. So I'm pretty confident that we can, we'll, we'll have, we can reduce the number that I had originally given them by 4,000.
Do you know when you'll get the real number? Will it be, we have to vote the budget at the, at the last meeting in April. We can have it by then.
I hope, but I'm not, I can't guarantee it. I may have the, the public safety, police and fire, I may have that by then. I'm not sure about workman's comp.
Okay.
Would that be enough to cover the town clerk additional allowance?
4,000, not the request, no. And again, we're not, we're not, I just want to clarify, we're not at a ceiling number here. We're trying to stay, we would like to give them, you don't want to, we don't want to levy to the limit. We don't want to levy, we don't have to, obviously, so we're not...
And, and on town meeting floor, we'll let people know that we are under the, under the limit now. If something is voted on town meeting floor that hasn't been recommended by us, that just means your taxes will go up a little bit more, because that's the only place that money can come from now would be with increasing taxes.
And it's still fair to call this a budget that's pretty much level funded, other than 2% increase for employees?
It would be very fair to call it that.
Pardon?
It would be very fair to call it that.
So if you leave the, if you leave 2% there, that you can have 5% increase two years in a row, right?
Yes. That's, yep. Unless, you know, things look better next year, it's brighter.
But this is level funded. I mean, if it's, you know, it's, I mean, it would be foolish to say, well, let's spend it all this year because...
No, we've, we've talked about that. Is, is it good to leave it there or not? I think it's good to leave it there, but it...
We, we are carrying, we don't have a number for the fire chief's salary, we're carrying a 2% increase, and we need some feedback from you about where that number should be.
I think, can you look at the contract? I think the contract, or the, it was for two years.
Oh, he said it was under negotiation.
Two years would be up this year then, in June, wouldn't it?
No, for some, for some reason, I think there's another one that's already in the contract, where you have to look at it.
I'll look, I don't, I don't know, I can't.
You couldn't run and look right now, could you?
For me, a juror.
Yeah, I mean, just as I emailed a little bit of Dale, the assessors are looking for, and badly need a new copier. It's, it's just, it's something that we've talked about as you centralized the computers in one line under the selectmen, it seems...
Did you get my email?
Yeah, well, you said that it's centralized, but the money isn't, it's in each individual budget, and it just seems like, it might, that might be a thing kind of like the computers where there shouldn't be like someone looking and saying, okay, we've got five, this one's four years old, this one's 10 years old, who needs what, and instead of like individual departments, we, we don't have any idea. So this is a recommendation from us, that maybe that would be something that could go in the central budget longer.
I was writing for a copy of the service inside of our account. Okay, we'll look into it and change it.
It's not going to happen this year. I mean, it's just a general, I think, comment. Likes the...
You're saving the bad news for last, are you?
No, no. We just have questions about the animal control budget, and it just seems like there's a lot of money going into those three lines, more than sometimes goes into other towns that are bigger. And we're wondering if there's any wiggle room in those lines.
It gets ignored every year, so we can just pass it right by. I don't know, we don't know if they're contractual, is that a contract, or is that...
We need a historian for that.
No, it, it's, Joe was working on a contract.
Oh, Joe? Joe was working on what?
I think it's going to be hard to ask that.
No, no, I know, it would, typically that's what the chairman does.
I'll be in touch with the animal control officer this week and see what I can find out. I'm not sure that's true.
He's going to keep saying it.
Almost $13,000 amongst the lines for that.
I'll be glad to explore that as soon as I can, and I'll get back to you before. Are you, you guys are not meeting next week?
Let's see what happens tonight.
Okay. Well, as soon as, as soon as I have anything, I'll, I'll let you know.
There was some work done, and again, Joe did it, but in trying to work with other towns, remember that, we were going to work with Landville, and I don't know where, where all that ended up.
I mean, I remember that, I remember it sort of hitting a wall, but I'm glad to look at it again a little bit.
I mean, I just saw something in the paper in the last couple of weeks about the compensation for the Halifax animal control person who I think makes less than ours, and I just, I just think it's, we're, we're looking at everything in a very tight way this year. It just seems like one...
But is, is that just, is that the complete budget, or is the...
I don't know, no.
Animal care budget and...
I, I, I don't know the answer to that.
He, he didn't ask for any increases, I see.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess, there were other departments that asked for additional help, it wasn't just the town clerk. And I guess we're looking for some feedback from your board about your thoughts about where we are, what we're doing, and... So...
I'm, I'm glad to comment a little bit. I mean, I hate that we've gotten to the place that we need to level fund, 2% increase, and that we're pretty much running as lean as we can, but I congratulate you guys for keeping things under control. 5% increases a lot, and I'm sure the citizens aren't going to be happy, but it's kind of a minimal level of services that we need. From my perspective, in terms of departments that most need help, I, I do feel that the town clerks probably presented a very cogent argument that they are overburdened at this point. I wish there were rooms for the other departments, but I think it feels like they're right on.
I basically second that. I mean, the clerks' added needs are based on state mandates, and I think we need to help there as much as we can, and it'd be great to help the others, but we can't do it this year.
I think as this, as this wraps up, if there is any, any extra money, we do need to look at the needs of like the Concom, the FNC, and the ZBA, because we're, we're getting, we're involved in lawsuits now. So this cost, it's costing us money, lack of records and lack of...
But we, but we didn't get any requests for anything, so we're not, we can't do anything. We're not going to generate things that we don't get requests.
So that would be hiring a new person rather than, and other departments, I think, fill in the other requests. Other departments that I'm looking at, who are helping the assessor.
They did request, so, I, I agree.
We get, we get nothing from those boards.
We get nothing. We didn't get...
You didn't, the select, you mean they didn't speak to you?
No, we didn't get budget requests.
Oh, from, no, from those other three boards?
No requests or no increases?
With that?
No requests from them or no increases?
No, but we actually got requests. Well, we, we certainly got information from them, but they weren't requesting additional.
We were talking about board of appeals, I, I don't think we...
Conservation, open space, and board of appeals.
I think they, I think they just, I think I sent an email, I sent an email to everyone that I did not hear from, and I don't, I don't know if I, I'd have to go back and look, but they either said just level fund us, or, or I didn't hear, but either way, we've got, so we have leveled funded.
I mean, I do agree with John, is when we're flush again, please soon. That's a real priority.
Well, I'm not sure it's a huge amount of money, but, you know, like this last weekend, there was all kinds of activity and stuff had to be overnighted and all kinds of stuff, and it was, you know, comes down to trying to find records and files and some mess.
So when you're ready, we just wanted to touch on timeline as well, but I, I, you know, want you to run out the floor.
That's a process.
Okay. So you're maybe meeting next week, maybe not. You are meeting April 27th. You're expecting to meet with us that night. We essentially are going to finalize town meeting warrant articles that night?
Well, you, what we need from you that night at the end of the meeting is you, the warrant, well, or the next day, whatever we do.
To be printed.
And with, with your, your voted recommendations in it, we add our voted recommendations to it and send it to the printer that...
Do we get to go first on the vote?
You're on the, you're, yeah, we don't, yeah.
What is, what was that date again? 27, April 27?
Yeah, two weeks from tonight.
Do we, do we have a, don't we only have a read through too with the moderator and the accountant?
Well, and that's the other thing to discuss, is whether we do that the same night or whether we save that for the next week, which would be, I guess, the, the fourth.
Is town council going to review it this year before we print it?
Yeah, they've, they've already reviewed what's on there so far.
Okay.
Yeah, either, either by last year's review, or, you know, some of the articles just repeat and repeat, verbatim. And any of the new stuff is gone through council that's on there, and I still have some other stuff to add, the non-monetary though, that council has.
So I would, I would put to this board, we know April 27th, we'll have to present the final, our final... Our final votes to Finance Committee will meet with you that night. Should we make the all-hands-on-board meeting the next week, May 4th, essentially preparing for town meeting? Are you guys meeting May 4th so that you could join us?
I don't... And I'm not sure that... I mean, we could be here, but I'm not sure that we add a lot to that meeting. You know, we listen, but, you know, the financial aspect will be done, but they'll argue that the printers. I think it's more just the legal and who's... Yeah. And then Barbara just gives us a sheet of what to say.
So, does that make sense to make the all-hands meeting May 4th?
It makes sense.
All right. What if Alana can't come that night?
Well, it's also... I think what seems to me, we've done it during the day before.
Yeah, it has been during the day.
Last year, we did it... Last year was... I'm pretty sure it was night. Might be better at night if we can.
What it is, is it's a dress rehearsal for the players.
Yep.
And the employees aren't necessarily here at night. So, that's... I think that's why we've done it in the day.
Nothing's changing. It's voted, it's printed, it's...
It's just who's going to do what.
So, are we as a board interested in seeing if Alana could come during the day? And if not, see if she can come at night? And if not, I think that's a scheduling issue that we could probably discuss further.
Yeah, John Trainor.
Can I suggest that you check with John Trainor first?
Yeah, and in fact, we did last week, and he felt like he was pretty regularly available. We do fully understand how important he is.
We could really need him. Oh, in terms of, you know, the other... Your meeting... Well, you don't have to wait till the last meeting to vote the either. I think we're pretty much in accordance with all of us. I think we still have to make sure everything adds up right.
Do you meet next week?
We are going to meet... Unfortunately, Monday turns into an unexpected holiday, so it won't be Monday night. I'm going to propose to this board we meet Tuesday night.
Because you could vote on the warrant articles on Tuesday night.
Well, and if they're done... I mean, there are a couple that aren't. We don't have the words for them yet.
Could you give me a little information on that project manager article? I'm just kind of curious as to what kind of a job description this person would have and just outline clearly as to what this person would do.
That basically oversee the design plans for a new public safety building, actually for a new police station. There are perk tests. There will be landscape architect involved in it, and also to review the plans, at least the initial plans, because there's no vote yet. So, to review the initial plans for the building and how the whole thing goes together. And that project manager includes probably a subcontract, like I said, for a architect design... I mean, an architect, landscape architect, because it would involve redoing the landscaping for the campus here. New parking lots.
The issue is typically you would have an engineer slash architect. It's our plan to put forth a project that calls for modular buildings, and all that design work is done... And engineering is done by the manufacturers. But we need somebody here to represent us to kind of drive that and coordinate it all. Instead of spending, you know, 10% on our... Typically, like this, you'd spend 10% on an architect slash engineer, and then... So, it would be $300,000 or something. And with these modular buildings, that's part of what they do. They're all pre-designed, pre-wired, pre-everything.
But there's things like...
John, actually, was pressing us, you know, and that's what we tried. We agreed that we need some sort of expertise there to guide us, but we don't need a full-fledged design team.
So, just to follow up, is there a description of... I mean, a job description? A job description or a...
I think we can make one.
Probably we'll be asked the question in town.
Yeah, no. I mean, we could certainly write one up. I mean, but again, by just by way of explanation, you know, well, we have the building that... We're buying the building, so we don't need an architect for that. But we're integrating the building into this campus, and that requires redoing the landscaping. And part of it is bringing gas to, you know, to the new building, which is an additional expense. And just someone to review that and to essentially write the RFP for the project.
I guess what I'm confused about is what if you come up with a plan, wherever you're thinking of putting it, and the town people say, "No, we don't want it there." Then you've done the engineering, and you've brought the plan, and you don't have a vote.
Well, if they ever change their mind, the plan will be there, but that is democracy, and that's sort of the way it works.
So, it's not putting the cart before the horse?
I think this actually isn't. In fact, I've... My feeling in the discussion that I was able to facilitate was that without having someone here, you can't even go to town meeting to explain that you're comfortable that this is what you're going to do. There's, you know, because it's not... It's not like we have a big open field here, and we're just going to put the building on it and put a driver to it. I mean, there's more complexity in trying to sit it on this site, and we've got a hill that we've got to deal with. You know, these different things need to be sort of sorted out to make sure that what you can get from the module building company, one, will fit there. Two, is engineered properly. Three, meets whatever other requirements we decide with respect to how it should look and so on and so forth. And then deal with all of this, which we all know dealing with this parking lot doesn't work now. And certainly when we add more to it, it's the opportunity to sort of create this into a campus, which it really isn't right now. And I think without that individual to sort of pull it all together, I don't know how you can go to town meeting and say, "It's only going to cost us X," because I don't think you necessarily know all the costs. There's a lot of pieces, I think, that have to be pulled together.
The final product of that person would be the RFP for the project itself. And that takes in a lot of other things in addition to the building. It takes in redoing this parking lot. It also takes in redoing the entrances on the street, because we have two. We really shouldn't have two. We really should only have one. It just makes it traffic-wise, it makes it better. But you need expertise to be able to do that. I mean, it's beyond me. I wouldn't know how to do it.
Is the library going to be included?
Hopefully, we can include the library parking lot as... I mean, this whole campus from start to finish, so that there'll be the entranceway for the time being. At least the fire department will remain where they are, but there'll be new means of access... Well, the same means of access onto the street. But again, the library won't have its own entrance anymore. They'll enter through a single drive, because after talking to the police chief, he said that is probably the best way to do it, rather than having essentially what amounts to three entrances on the one campus. Traffic-wise, it's a problem, and it's difficult. You know, it's a potential hazard, so... But I think John explained it better than I can, so...
I liken it to what we did for the historical commission with the property inventory. We actually spent, the first town meeting we went to, that we spent, I think it was $5,000 that we used for a consultant to come in and tell us what we needed to do. What then ended up actually getting us occurred was more on the other end, because when we did the whole project, we actually... Because she had done that work first, and then we could come to town meeting and to CPA and say... CPC and say, "This is what we need to do, and this is how much it's going to cost us." We then actually leveraged that work to be able to do more with the other work that we did. And I don't think we would have gotten anywhere here the results that we did.
Thank you. So, the idea would be to bring the projects of the next annual town meeting?
I think the goal is... A committee has been working on this, including Dale, Board of Selectmen, Fire Chief, Police Chief, continuing working. And the goal would be maybe annual town meeting. I think there is the consideration of even a special town meeting in the fall to present this as...
I just want to remind you that the language of the Capital Purposes Fund restricts appropriations to annual town meetings only. So, you might want to remember. We looked that up before we came. We had forgotten that as well, so...
Really? I have to go back and reread? So, that's...
That sort of changed... This might change your mind.
No special need.
Well, I mean, again, you'd probably then, in that case, you'd be... Yeah, you'd be limited to 2016.
Well...
Except for the money... Just throwing it out there, presumably will be on the order of $100,000. That would be toward the end of, I don't know when. We're going to... If we get money back from the Pembroke settlement in the form of reduced silver-like assessments, we are budgeting for the full assessment as we have to, but that would free up some money that might carry to the annual.
Well, at worst case, it's just more time to get a really solid plan totally pinned down and sold.
I think you're rushing to get to a special in the fall to be able to get it done, packaged, and then sold. I mean, that's the piece of it, is the selling of it.
Good?
I would agree with that.
What's that?
I would agree. It's a huge project.
Patient urgency. There's two pieces.
I think if you came in with it, the people in the town would not go for it if it wasn't thoughtfully planned out by somebody. I don't know. They presented.
I think that is the key piece, and I mean, we ran into this a little bit ago when FinCom wasn't here, when we had many representatives and had a big discussion. And that is absolutely the key, that whether this gets voted up or down, is people fully understand what we're trying to do. So, I get that timeframe in a way. It's a relief. I mean, it just gives us all the more time to really get this right. But it's another year.
No, you were going to try to get us some ballpark numbers of what funding this new capital purpose fund might cost so that we can... We kind of want to have an idea of what we're planning to spend this year and what that's going to mean in the future, so...
The key's on current interest rates, on bond rates. I mean, I don't know. At current bond rates, and it was figured for police and fire station, for a maximum of $5 million bond to do both. It may be actually a $4 million bond to do both. We're not sure at this point. But at this point, we're moving ahead with the police station because that's... That's a... We're set there. We're evaluating the Center Street property for the fire station, but they wouldn't be... Although, in this case, they may actually be. We have to wait until the 16th town meeting. They may both be on the same warrant. But at the four and a half... Approximately $4.5 million was just a ballpark estimate. No one's quite sure at this point what it would be. It would cost about $350,000 a year on a payback on the bond. So, which would... It's $325,000, I think, a year is what it...
How many years?
20. 20. We could bond it longer. We could bond it for five more years. It would... That would lower it somewhat, more interest, obviously. But at the current rates, and I haven't gone into this to see where it'll fund, but it looks like it's pretty stable at about $0.5 million a year in that account, which would leave approximately $175,000 a year unexpended for the bond, and that would be to cover other capital expenses. At this point, the town's in fairly good shape as far as large vehicles, fire trucks, highway vehicles. Those are the big expensive vehicles that you could fund out of that account. It's not... It doesn't look like the town's going to need any of those for probably five years at a minimum.
I inadvertently left out of that capital report the highway requests, which was completely my error. I'm not allowed to, because there are a couple highway vehicles. Not like...
Yeah, he has some long-term stuff. I asked him, and he said, "No, as far as big items..." He's pretty well said. He's really not going to need anything. The fire department is pretty well fixed as far as what they need. And those are the big... As far as vehicles go, those are the big items.
And Dale, do you know how much longer we're paying off those heavy vehicles in that article? The 2013 pump or the 2008 pump, or the 2008 EMS?
You know, have that written down? I don't know, because it was a... There was a five-year... There was a five-year payback and then a 10-year payback. The big fire truck was a 10-year... Was 10 years, and I believe the other two end sooner, like two years. But I will make a note, and I'll look for that, and I'll get it to you.
2008 EMS, the old ambulance?
What's that?
No, that's rescue one. EMS, is that rescue one? That's the multi-purpose truck.
Yeah, if you could just let us know when those... How many more years are left on those?
Yeah. We did it on a 10-year... It was a 10-year note total.
Oh, they're all together? I see.
Yeah, it was a 10-year note total, and that pays off everything, finishes all of those deals.
And how many years we're in? Is this like the third year?
This is, I think, third year now. But it may, in fact, actually... I think the way it's structured, it may in fact actually drop when the other two are paid off, which would mean two more years on, I believe, two more years, and about 40% of it goes away at that point.
Yeah. If you could give me some...
I'll check it. I'll get back here and send it to you. I'll send you the copy, the original copy.
We're good?
We're good. Thank you so much for your efforts, and thanks for coming in tonight. We'll see you in two weeks from tonight.
Okay. Dale, let us know if you had any more money in charge.
I'll try. It's pretty rare these days.
I know, really.
So, we started the meeting forewarned about scheduling things, so next Monday night is holiday. We probably do need to meet. Could we meet Tuesday, April 21st? Fire Chief has a... Would like an executive session with us, so we want to start at 5:30. If that's all right?
Any chance for Wednesday instead of Tuesday?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I remember. I remember you would probably have a conflict. Wednesday would be okay for me, but...
You can skip quiet.
I'm going to skip quiet.
Oh, oh. Yeah, that's fine.
So, we'll go Wednesday, the 22nd? All right. With an executive session at 5:30. And then we will meet the 27th. We'll be finishing the town meeting warrant. We'll be voting on them. And then I am going to work on May 4th, whether we do day or evening for all-hands-on-deck in preparation for town meeting. So, I'm on Alana, all hands, next week, executive session. That's all the scheduling issues I had.
We had talked about the fourth being during the day. So, you're going to check with John Trainor or Alana?
Yeah, I figured I'd go with Alana first on that February... On that April 4th meeting being daytime. Would that work for everyone daytime?
Daytime's fine.
Like midday?
Are we talking May 4th?
Pardon?
May 4th.
Yes. So, would be... The preference would be daytime as a first choice or evening?
Doesn't matter to me, really.
It doesn't matter to me, too, what it's Barbara and all those people are...
Yep, understood. All right. Well, I'll ask Alana if she could come in the day. Do we ever see her in the day?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think it all depends on her. All right. If she can't come the day or evening, well, then I'll be in touch, and we'll negotiate. Beautiful. Anything else? I need a motion. Does that need adjourn?
Second.
Have those in favor. I very much appreciate everyone being here. Have a good week. We'll be at it again next week.